Good evening, everyone. And welcome to tonight's City Council meeting of December 4th, 2019. And could I please have Pastor Dean Nelson come forward from St. John's Lutheran Church for the invocation? Please stand.
Let us pray. To give you thanks, Heavenly Father, for being present with us. We thank you for giving inspiration and love and care in the hearts of many people to help make this city a better place, a place of friendship and love and care and building up rather than tearing down. We pray that you be with us now, especially during this season. Oh, Holy Child of Bethlehem, descend to us, we pray. Cast out our sin and enter in. Be born in us today. We hear the Christmas angels, the great glad tidings sing. Oh, come to us, abide with us. Our Lord Emmanuel. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I'd like to call to order the December 4th City Council meeting of the City of Los Banos. And Chief, would you lead us in a flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Director Maloney?
Freya?
Here.
Johnson Santos Jones Lewis Volalta?
Here, we do have a quorum. Consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Ms. Freya?
I'll move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mr. Santos?
Second.
Motion by Freya, second by Santos to approve the agenda stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. If you have a cellphone, would you please place them on vibrate or turn them off? When you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum? Come forward.
Good evening. My name is Ben Gonzalez. I live on Scripps Drive. And I'm here to try to get some help for the speeding problem on Scripps Drive. I've talked to the chief several times and as yet nothing... People have posted slowdown signs on both ends of Scripps Drive. If you go, you'll see them. People are already posting them. I tried to get speed cushions, couldn't get them because they said it was a thoroughfare, but yet they put them on dove drive. They got them. We didn't get them. It's a school zone and there's a lot of kids out there. Cars are running forty, fifty miles an hour out there in the school zone and never no police presence out there. And I've complained about it. One day, I was standing in front of my house watching the traffic and school bus made a turn off of college screens and this car ran a stop sign. And that school bus driver looked at him, saw him stop. The car just went around and kept on going, you know? And just, we just need some help out there. We need, I've talked to, I think this is Chief, right? I've talked to you about what, three, four times? And he was supposed to send me volunteers out there. Volunteers never came. And I know the volunteers, they never came, but something's gotta be done before somebody gets killed. I've been there twenty years. I've seen three wrecks on that road already. But the traffic, the speeding there is unbearable, really. And I got all the neighbors to sign up petition for the speed bumps and because they said it was a thoroughfare, so they told us we couldn't have them. And we should like some help out there, really like some help. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you very much for coming.
You bet, sir.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Hey, how's it going, everybody? My name is Julian Kelly. I'm the owner of the Kelly and Price Consulting Group. The CEO of the company that I represent will be here shortly due to traffic and a little bit of rain. But what I'm here to speak about is a program that we have called Mighty Minds. It is going to be introduced by an event called Kids' Day in... Okay. It's gonna be introduced by an event that we called Kids' Day in Tech, which should be this December 14th over at the Los Banos Community Center. Excuse me. So, what Kids' Day in Tech is supposed to be is an exposure to a ten-year program we're trying to implement for kids seven to seventeen. And what it is, is again, educating them in tech. So, for, to give you a little story, you know, I went over to Fresno State. I graduated with about a 3.0 and I planned to study electrical engineering. So, when I got there, I found out that I had to take classes like chemistry and physics. Now, I've never seen that ever again, ever in my high school education. So, I was stuck and I ended up having to transfer, or not transfer, but switch my majors. And that's the same situation with a lot of kids that I went to school with, which is unfortunate. And then even those kids that graduate with that, they don't usually go into the field that they study. So, with tech being a predominant industry growing in Silicon Valley, we want to make sure that kids have ample opportunity to have the, I guess, the abilities to pursue that dream and pursue that career. So, whether it's working in the industry or starting your own tech business, we're trying to make sure that the kids have that opportunity and give them majority on multiple resources to do that. And then once those people that take that time to put in the work, we want to give them the reward for doing that. So, again, for example, in our, in our day for Kids' Day in Tech in Merced, we had thirty kids come out or so and twenty-five kids got a copy of a video game of my, of a client of mine, Judo Baby Inc. And the other five kids got to go to a, excuse me. They got to go to a comedy show that was held by another one of our partners, Love, Faith and Hope. So, at the event going on this December 14th, we got about fifteen copies signed of the game, got about six passes to the movie theater and should have a couple of passes to the bowling alley to make sure we give these kids a reward. And again, all of those kids that don't get those passes, they still get a free copy of the game and all kids get a copy, get an E copy of the game so they can play it at their own home. So, again, what that is, what that entails should give those kids the initiative to want to go to pursue tech and pursue, I guess, the industry of tech. So, again, when we think of tech, a lot of people think of it as just coding and programming. So, again, we want to make sure that they have a lot of exposure to other things. So, for example, we're doing a workshop on AI, robotics, 3D printing, drone science and solar. Another one that we're getting ready to do is gonna be on encryption, decryption, cybersecurity and battery technology. So, you see the, you see the diversity of the categories that we're gonna be speaking about and there's, there's only a whole lot more to go and there's a whole lot of connections that we have to make. You know, of course, once, once implemented, we already have some things going on in Merced. Lot of, lot of good backing from the districts. Already have one of our events approved, NAACP is backing us. And a lot of people that are really on board with making this initiative work. I just want to make sure that all kids have that opportunity, you know? And if the, if the city can help us get that taken care of, because again, a lot of kids, they end up in socioeconomic situations where their parents may or may not be able to put them in it, you know, and since we're, since it does cost, we want to make sure that all kids, again, have that opportunity. So, I ask for you guys' support and if you guys have any questions or any comments or anything like that, please feel free to reach out to me. And yes, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mayor Volalta and Council. I'm very happy to be here in front of you this evening. I'm just here to give you a little bit of an update of the last six months, especially the last three months of what the Downtown Association has been doing and what some of the... Pardon? Oh, I'm so sorry. Sharon Silva with the Downtown Association. Thank you. And also, I'm watching my time because I tend to run over, so I'm gonna try to behave tonight. I'll go very fast. We, I really want to tell you that I know one of the, one of the issues that we are in charge of through our mission is that we bring activity into the downtown area. Our goal really is to stimulate activity and to stimulate what goes on in the downtown to get other people to come to downtown and to know what is offered here. It's really a destination shopping area. We're working very hard to get it into that position. I've had the fortunate opportunity to do that in other, in another community and it did take a couple of years. This doesn't happen overnight. It's a consistency that you have to continue to work on. But if you don't start and you don't give everything you have, it'll never happen. It'll just continue to stay how it is. So, we've started. In August, we had a casino night because our funds are raised only by private funding and by that it means through sponsorships, through memberships and other things that we do to raise dollars and some of that is events. September 19th, we did Farm and Table. We had a very good evening with that. We did raise over sixteen thousand dollars for that event and we raised close to six thousand dollars for the first time out with the casino night. In September, Jean Leib has always done the Reader's Choice and with everything going on and changes, the group that had taken care of that was not able to do it. So, they came and asked if we would help, so we did that for them. And that was, that was really for the community to have an opportunity to honor the people of this community. In November 9th, we did a Christmas tree lighting the day after Thanksgiving and most of the smaller communities, in fact, San Francisco, Oakland, several of the larger communities also do a Christmas tree lighting after, the day after Thanksgiving to kick off the year. Black Friday is what they call it. I guess they still call it their cyber. There's all these different things that go on, but they've always done it on the Friday. Well, I wanted to do that this year. I had the pleasure of doing that for about twenty years with another community that I lived in. It, we didn't have a huge amount of turnout, but we had a great amount of turnout. And the thing that we really wanted was for people to find out where the community was. What we did this year is we decided not to completely do the trees because it's costly. It cost us over ten thousand dollars just to do with what we have and we had to raise all that money. So, what we wanted to do is to make the town longer, so from H Street to almost down to the school, down to the other side. We decided to half do the trees and to do more trees and we definitely, definitely, one of our goals is to work with I Street. So, we definitely wanted trees on I Street. And I do want to address that just shortly for a minute. I Street unfortunately doesn't have a lot of infrastructure where we have lighting availability by plugging in things and you can't stream your lights. So, we were able to get a few, but Mayor, I was able to also find six more trees that we do have hot, hot wiring, so I have somebody coming out to do those. So, we're getting as many lights as we can on I. We feel that everything in the community in the downtown is extremely important and I Street is really a thoroughfare. Wish the ambulance didn't think so. I wish they would continue with H Street. That would be much safer than when people are on the streets. But, but I Street is an important part of ours. And one of the things I want to tell you, just a couple of things that's happened in the last few months that you might know about and might not, is that the Cardinelli Building has sold and it's closed. The Smoke Shop has bought the building next to it and has somebody that's coming into it. The Theater has been sold. They decided not to turn it over, but to keep it and they're building it as a... It's gonna be first class. I've been assured by Mr. Sousa and it's going to be a sports center as well.
Sharon, I'm sorry.
Is my five minutes up?
Yeah, five minutes are up.
Okay.
And, and, and so would you please come back
Yes.
to the 18th meeting and continue with what's going on because we love these reports. And, and if we need a detailed report, a real deal to report, then maybe we can agendize something for you
Sure.
and then we can do that. That way the council can respond.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Sorry. Thank you for getting me on there.
Oh, no, no. Thank you for coming. Thank you.
We've done a lot, so I thank you very much for your time.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Mr. Mayor and Council members and staff. Once again, I'm Jim Valentine, Los Banos. I'm here representing the Kiwanis Christmas Eve Dinner. It's co-sponsored by the Los Banos Fire Department. Thank you, Chief Hurley. This is gonna be on the 24th as it always has been. Our menu's the same, barbecue chicken, pasta, salad, drinks, pie. And, you know, we're fortunate that the financing for this comes from our individuals and business members of this community. And so, everything is on, on pace and we got, Alex, if, with your permission, I'd like to leave flyers out like we usually do here in lobby. So, everything should be okay. We're kind of planned and if we get some volunteers from the public, we'd appreciate it on the 24th. I know the mayor usually shows up and anybody else is welcome to come. One way or the other, we'll find a job for you. This dinner, this will be the 37th annual dinner that we've had and we prepare food and for nine hundred and fifty people. So, it's all hands at vent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The sit-down is from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Prior to that, we're doing the takeout and deliveries for the shut-ins and so forth.
Jim, stay there for just a minute. Students, if you know anyone who needs a meal on that day, on the 24th, Christmas Eve, during those times, you can pick up a meal at Fire Station 1 on 7th Street and you can deliver it to someone who, who really needs a, a hot dinner. So, think about it. If you know someone in your life that, that would like a hot dinner, someone in need, it's all free. You can go pick it up and you'll see Mr. Valentine there and, and they would love to have you do that.
And if you remember what you just heard, there'll be flyers in the lobby from tonight on. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, for all that you do. So, anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Steve Galicchio. Pardon my voice. This just happened this afternoon. Other than that, I was able to yell. Steve Galicchio, Operations Supervisor, Republic Services here in Los Banos. I also take care of Dos Palos and Atwater. I, I wanted to basically come out, introduce myself and just touch base on a few items that are important for the garbage collection business and for the City of Los Banos. We do work together. We have a pretty good relationship and one of the goals is to continue to improve that relationship between the two companies. My past, I've, I've been on the job about six weeks and let me tell you, there's been a lot to learn and a lot to get up to speed in the, in the garbage business. I know there's been some issues in the past, either with servicing, residential customers, commercial customers, various items and whatnot. It's just, it's just an ongoing process that we're dealing with, the issues in the past. I am addressing them personally. The issues in the past, I am addressing them personally. I've been out several times to meet one-on-one with customers in the community that have called in for issues or problems or concerns. And, you know, we sit down, we talk about it. I show them what we got. We talk about it. Everything seems to be going out pretty well. My staff and my team have been working very diligently to correct these issues. However, training and new procedures is an ongoing thing. We're hiring more drivers. We're improving our equipment, and we've also just hired a new mechanic and a new driver. So we are making progress on our end to be able to service the increases coming from the city. And as you grow, you all know that services do get taxed. I mean, and we're to that point where we realize that, and we're moving forward with what we're doing. My goal, and a goal of my staff and my drivers, is to be proactive and not reactive. However, this does take some time. What I want to do is I want to touch on about three or four, five points real quickly that are important, that everybody should know, and it may arouse different questions and concerns. And please, I have an open-door policy. You can reach me through the office phone here in Los Banos. The number's on our cans. It's 826-0231. I have an email. You can email me, or you can stop by the office of 409 Mercy Springs, the little brown building. We're in there. If I'm not available, Anisa will take a message and get it to me, and I will contact you back. But there's a few things that I need to just touch base on. If there's a miss in the garbage service, sometimes we get calls from consumers that say they missed my can today, or they missed my can yesterday. Can you come and get it? What we need and what is in our contract is that there's... We'd like them to call within 48 hours. I don't care if it's a weekend or a holiday. Call. We may not be there to answer the phone, because we do like holidays also, but we have a recorder. Or if we're not in the office, the phone rolls to Fresno, and they will relay the message back when we get back. It goes to my secretary and myself. So, we are available to handle it. But the 48 hours is very important, because if we go back, there's no charge. On occasions, there may be a charge if it's reoccurring, if we have to keep going back and it's a week later, you know? We question that. So there is that window to call in, excuse me, to be able to get the service and get what you needed. Repairs and replacements on the totes for consumers, go through City Hall, call their staff here. They will write up a service request. They email it to us at the office, and we have, I believe, up to 10 days to respond and get it corrected and fixed. My goal, and what I've been doing with the guys the last couple of weeks, is if we can get it done sooner, we do. We'll get calls and sometimes be able to go out the same day if we have the manpower and the ability to do it. That's my goal. I want to be there before the problem happens, actually. So if you call me today and I have availability to get a can out to you, I will do it. I've done them personally, myself, which some of the drivers think I'm a little nuts, but that's okay. We got to get the job done. It's whatever it takes. So that's really important. Holidays, like I said, we enjoy our holidays also. We're no different than any other town. We have a holiday schedule. From the holiday on, we are a day behind in servicing.
I have about 15 more seconds.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so, we are a day behind in scheduling. We will get to you. We picked the XX up on Saturday. Be sure to put your cans out the night before, not the day of, but the night before. My trucks go out early in the morning, and we don't want to get a call that you missed me if your can wasn't out. As I said, there's three cans: green, yard waste; blue, recycling; gray is garbage. Know what you're putting in them. We have to cover those items. And through CalRecycle, there's new laws coming up where we're going to have to be more stringent upon that. We're working with the city to get information out to everybody also for that.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay. Biggest thing is, I'm available. Call me. Call me on the phone. Email me, and let's get this thing moving forward. Our saying at work is, "We'll handle it from here." Thank you.
Thank you. Come back anytime and give us updates, please. So, anyone else who would like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, bring it back to council level, and we will go on to Item 6, Consideration of Approval and Consent Agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight, we have...
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 219051 through 219345 in the amount of $1,105,894.64. Minutes for the November 20th, 2019 city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6161, authorizing the city manager to award the bid for the purchase of one 2020 Ford Interceptor Utility Police Vehicle to Sanus Ford, Los Banos, in the amount of $34,925.75. City Council Resolution Number 6162, accepting the 8th and 9th Street Waterline Project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay. Is there any city council member who would like an agenda item on the consent agenda removed for discussion? Not hearing anyone? Do I have a motion? Mrs. Santos?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this consent agenda as stated.
Ms. Freya?
I'll second that motion.
It's been motioned by Santos, seconded by Freya, to approve the consent agenda as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Item 7, Merced College Bond Measure Presentation by Chris Fattelli, Dr. Merced and Merced College Superintendent. Chris?
Thank you. Good evening. Mayor Velota, City Council, I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to present to you all about our bond measure that's going to the ballot measure in March of 2020. Had the opportunity to meet with the mayor, and in fact, I'm sitting by a high schooler. I went ahead and filled out what I'm speaking about on her sheet. Sorry, the rest of the guys didn't get this. I already talked about what I'm going to talk about, what the potential concerns will be. I've already written them down for you, so for her assignment, it's done, because I know it will come up. But no, I'm very happy to be here. I want to introduce the team that's behind me. I know you've probably met most of them, and then briefly talk to you about the process leading up to the bond measure, and then really open it up to answer questions that you might have, as well as address any concerns that you may have regarding the bond. But it probably goes without introduction. One of our Board of Trustees, Joe Gutierrez, is behind me. We also have our dean, fairly new dean of the Los Banos campus, and many of you came out to the meet and greet. We appreciate that, at the Los Banos Board Meeting not too long ago, but Dr. Lunida Cordova. And sitting beside her is our Vice President of Instruction, Kelly Fowler. And sitting next to Kelly is our Associate Vice President of External Relations, Jill Cunningham. And if I can't answer any questions, then one of them can about the bond. Before I leave tonight, I'm going to pass out a brochure, but what I wanted to talk to you about is the process that led up to the bond decision, and where we're at, and what it means for the Los Banos community. So, I'm going, well, I'm finishing my third year as the president of Merced College. And as the president of Merced College, I'm not the president of just the Merced Campus. I'm president of the Merced Campus, as well as the Los Banos Campus, and any of our off-campus centers. And one of the things that I have enjoyed most is partnering with the west side of our county and working with this community to grow our educational opportunities. In fact, worked with Dr. Brenda Latham during my first year to expand our career technical education programs. We launched a welding program, worked with many of you on finding a location for that. It is a robust program. In fact, we could probably add one or two full-time additional instructors tomorrow and fill up classes. So, this community is growing. I shared with the mayor a couple of weeks ago, it is our highest area of growth. We recognize Los Banos is a very integral and important part of the Merced Community College District, and we want to continue to invest in that. In 2002, we went out to this community, and we asked for support to build one of the most beautiful centers in all of the state of California, and that's why we had the Los Banos Campus Center here in Los Banos. This community overwhelmingly supported that bond, but now it's time for us to expand and to invest in more career technical education programs and more services and comprehensive services to this area. Three years ago, I started working with the board on the development of an educational master plan, and that is the foundation for everything we are doing within the five-year period of this past year and the next four years. As a part of our educational master plan, we came to you, the city council. We went to many individuals in this community. We talked to stakeholders. We talked to those who could run some economic forecasts for us. We looked at emerging job industries, and we identified areas of growth right here in Los Banos. That was the beginning of our planning processes. The next stage was developing a strategic implementation plan to really begin to put those into action. And our strategic implementation plan is posted on our website, and it specifically calls out all the things we're doing to serve the Los Banos community and to expand our educational opportunities. And there's a lot in it related to expanding educational opportunities and instructional programs, particularly career technical education programs like the welding program, our allied health program, cybersecurity, and others. The next logical step in that was to talk about what do we need facility-wise to expand these educational programs? We hired an architect, one of the best in the industry, Gensler Architects, to come in and conduct a space utilization study at both the Los Banos Campus and the Merced Campus. Take a look at what we have. Look at our educational master plan. Look at the areas of growth. Project out, looking at trends, where we're going to grow the most, and invest in facilities that's going to allow us to meet that future need and demand. So from that, we developed our Facilities Master Plan. This is a 10-year document. This has been approved by the board. There are five chapters. There's one chapter that is solely dedicated to the Los Banos Campus. I'm going to give you a couple of copies of this tonight. If you'd like to circulate that around, I'll get all of you copies if you'd love to read it, but I'll give you a few copies if you'd like to read through this. But I'm going to tell you what's in it. We have a 30,000-square-foot Career Technical Education Building that is going to be built at the Los Banos Campus, and a 10,000-square-foot Child Development Center. The Career Technical Education Building, the 30,000-square-foot Career Technical Education Building, will be able to house our welding program, a future ag mechanics program. It will be able to house cybersecurity and computer networking programs, and as we grow into the emerging industries, we'll be able to add additional programs as a part of that building. That is a very large facility. To put it into perspective, we're building an ag IT building with the 2,002 bond dollars right now and the Merced Campus, and it's a very large complex, and it's a 21,000-square-foot complex. And the Child Development Center, a 10,000-square-foot Child Development Center, will be twofold. Of course, it will serve as a place where our current students can send their young children while they're getting an education, which is much needed, and it will also serve as a laboratory classroom for students in Los Banos who want to become early childhood educators, so it will be twofold. This also spells out future growth on the 100-plus-acre campus that includes agriculture and other facilities that will continue to grow. So, once this was approved, then the question was, how do we fund it? And so, we did what most colleges do. We did polling. We looked at the feasibility of going after a bond. Ultimately, the board landed on going out for a comprehensive bond for both the Merced Campus and the Los Banos Campus for $247 million. That will build out every building that's a part of this Facilities Master Plan. There's also a statewide bond that is on the measure. If that passes, then it will build everything in this plan plus, and that plus will be determined if that one is passed. We didn't count on that, but we certainly hope we get that, and we'll continue to invest in areas of growth. So, in March of 2020, March 3rd, that will be on the ballot. We want to educate, of course, all of you. I shared, we've met with the mayor. We've met with your city manager. I would be happy to meet with any of you one-on-one. I have learned a lot as a part of this process. I've learned a lot about your community. You have a very shy mayor, and so he did not, he wasn't very candid with me. I joke, but he was very candid with me about the concerns that this community has had over these types of measures in the past. I wholeheartedly get that, and I understand, but I want you to know that we view Merced College as Merced College, and that's our entire service area. We're not the city of Merced, the city of Los Banos. We're not the city of Gustine. We're not different entities. Our board is one board. And so, the resolution that was passed is to support our entire Facilities Master Plan, and that is spelled out in the resolution. To further show that commitment, one of the things that we are going to do is we are going to draft a separate resolution that demonstrates that these two facilities that are part of our master plan will be in the initial phase if we get this bond, and that will be put in writing, and it will go to our Board of Trustees for consideration. And so, you all have the chance, particularly your mayor and others, if you'd like to look at it. We'll draft it, probably put a draft on next Tuesday's board agenda just as a draft, and that way you have time to provide input to us as to what will further demonstrate in writing what that commitment looks like, and then our board will consider that in January. I can speak for our board in letting you know they will have no problem passing such a resolution, because they believe wholeheartedly in this planning process. They believe and they know that our growth and all of our data shows that this is where we should be investing, and so that is not going to be an issue. And I hope that you understand that our commitment is demonstrated every time you drive down the highway and you look at that beautiful campus, and we'll continue to invest in it. So, with that, questions, comments? Questions?
Chris?
Yes, sir.
The resolution that you're going to pass?
Yes.
Okay. And it's the initial phase. How many years is the initial phase?
That's hard to put into writing, but it would be within the first five years, because what happens is, once we get the funding, then we have to submit an initial project proposal through our chancellor's office and the state chancellor's office. They have to take that through their processes with the Department of Finance, as well as the chancellor's office for one year, and then the next year it goes in as a final project proposal. Architects are involved. Once the final project proposal is submitted and accepted by the state, then we're given the go-ahead, as long as it is in the budget, and for us, it would be in our local budget, because these are local bond dollars, to hire an architect and get the process started. I say five years or less, because the ag IT building, for example, it took two years to get it into the cycle, and then, as you know, when you're building a major educational complex, it takes at least a year working with design architects, at least it does in the educational system, and then it's a year of construction. So that's, it's about a four-year process of getting this one done, but we plan to hit the ground running, and we have no problem putting in the resolution that the initial phase will be immediate, because we need to build these facilities. We've got to erect the facilities and get them going, because we literally have students pounding down our doors. The access is an issue, and without facilities to do it, especially in Los Banos, we have got to build the CT facilities to serve the students here, so it will be immediate, but that's probably more like four to five years total from start to finish.
Yeah, I believe you're sincere. I believe the current board is sincere. But if it isn't in writing, it doesn't exist, and students remember that. Something isn't in writing, it doesn't exist. The other question I have...
Write that down, guys. Write that down.
So, if the other question that I have is that if you pass a resolution, and Joe, Joe's an older guy, you know, so we don't know how long he's going to be on the board.
He looks so young.
Yeah. And so, if the board changes, can they vote that resolution down and change what you've put in process?
What, I guess technically, any of us could find... What, I guess technically, any of us could find a legal loophole to do that. What we will do, though, to speak to that is we will have our legal counsel put as much binding language in that to demonstrate our commitment.
Okay, well, the binding language that I would, for me to be comfortable about Los Banos, since we put in a lot of money with Sananella and the West Side, the binding language for me would be that a future board couldn't change it. And after you set all your good works in place, that another elected official or a majority of the elected officials could come in and they could change what you've put in place and say, "We're not going to build that facility in Los Banos. We're going to build it in 30 years."
Yeah.
Instead of building it in the four to five years.
No, I hear you. And you shared this, and I get it. I wholeheartedly understand it.
Okay.
What I would tell you is we will make it as strong as we are legally allowed to. That's how comfortable we feel in our plan. Now, even the resolution that was passed by the board in October, when it comes to educational bonds, that language would not, even the language from 2002's bond, had, I mean, there was nothing definitive that a board couldn't have come along and changed already. That's how these resolutions work. And so it isn't as if we could have put something that's so binding that a board couldn't come along and change something. You all, if you weren't here tomorrow, I'm sure that a council can come and undo a lot of things that you all did. And that's the reality we live in of elected officials. But what I can tell you is that the integrity of Merced College, not just the board, but the integrity of Merced College and the commitment that we have to this community, which is demonstrated just a couple of miles from here, is so profound that whatever resolution they put should only be an asterisk or an exclamation point beside the commitment we have. And so we'll put as much, Mayor, we'll put as much binding language as we can. But even the resolution that's passed, the one in October, to the extent that that's binding, another board could come along and interpret it differently, revise it anyway. The one in 2002 was the same way. When we came to this community and asked for support for the 2002 one that included Los Banos campus, there was no guarantee that that campus was going to be where it is now. It could have been in Dos Palos, it could have been Sananella, it could have been on the outskirts of the service area. It was just a guarantee that, but the commitment's already there. We've got 100-plus acres in Los Banos and it's happening. That's where our growth is. And we will put in writing that it's happening 110%. But to the extent that you're going to get no loopholes, I don't know if that exists in our world today, unfortunately. But we're going to make sure that we put it as strong as possible where you can feel more comfortable and everyone else in the community.
I've been in bond language before and the bond language, see, we didn't have any input into that. And if we'd have known that what we could have done is made some suggestions to help you out with that situation. But that's over with, that's neither here nor there. Let's see what you come up with. Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. I wanted to speak on the building sizes, I guess, once or if, once and if the bond is passed and whatnot. Will those buildings, I know they're a very nice size, but will those buildings accommodate possible future technical programs outside of what you've already mentioned? Or is that something that would need to be added on for the future?
Yeah, it will allow for growth on the CT side. We don't need 30,000 square foot for welding and ag mechanics alone. It will allow for it. What you'll see in the facilities master plan, though, is that this is just the beginning of many more buildings in Los Banos. I mean, truly, when you look at the trends in the California Community College system, Los Banos is kind of teetering between being a comprehensive center and a full-bone college on its own. And so, yes, it will accommodate additional growth. But I think that if we get the additional matching dollars, which who knows if that will pass or not from the state, then we'll probably see additional instructional facilities built in Los Banos as well, as well as support services, maybe an expansion of our library, a new cafeteria. I mean, there's many other areas that we need to expand. This is just the most pressing as it relates to instructional and career technical education growth.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Mrs. Lewis?
Couple of questions. In your master plan, how many buildings are you proposing to be built on the two campuses? And of those, how many are to be built in Los Banos?
There's two buildings that are in the initial stage of the Los Banos campus. And I believe there's eight buildings on the Merced campus, total.
Okay, and that initial phase is what you're speaking about tonight?
This particular bond, this amount, would cover, of course, we have to look at escalation, but should cover most all of those buildings. But we'll probably do this in three stages over the years. It will probably be a 15-year rollout. Hopefully, we could do it in 10, but that will be part of the resolution they passed to show that the initial phase, whatever we do in Merced, the initial phase will also include these buildings in Los Banos within the first five years.
There are eight that you're proposing in Merced, two for Los Banos. Two that you spoke of this evening are the career technical program and childcare center. What are the building sites that you're proposing for Merced?
In Merced, they're mainly career technical education, although 50% of our buildings on the Merced campus are 40 years or older. That campus started being built in the 1960s. So some of the buildings this bond would include tearing down some very old facilities that weren't done at the time, thinking longer term. So automotive technology building, that would also include the welding program over there, all in the same complex. General education instructional building, a mechanized ag building, which is much smaller than what we're looking at building over here, but it would accommodate our mechanized ag program. A new student support services building. The current student services is in our old library on the main campus. If you've been there, it's the beehive in the middle of campus and they've just completely outgrown that space. So a new student support services building. I'm doing this off the top of my head. A new gymnasium. The gymnasium was built in the early stages and it is, according to our architects, more costly to invest in that facility than to build a new one. And then there is some modernization projects as a part of that. We're trying to save as many of the buildings that we can and update those as well. That's not eight, but I can flip through it or I can leave you with it. You can look over the exact buildings.
And I think for me, as well as some of the concerns for this community, is that the West Side always ends up having, being on the short end of the stick.
Yeah.
And that's kind of what I'm seeing with this, is that there's a whole bunch of stuff that's going to be built, repaired, tore down and new stuff going on in Merced. And, you know, the childcare, that's a nice amenity, but we're getting one new educational building. And I want to know where this campus is going to expand. I mean, it's nice to do all that stuff in Merced.
Of course.
And, you know, you're probably looking at the mere fact that this is a newer campus, but it doesn't mean that we should be neglected for expansion on those 100 acres that one of our developers so generously gave to this college in order to expand.
Yeah.
And certainly, I don't want to see it, you know, a 50-year lifetime and we're still sitting there with the same buildings that are on that campus.
That's right.
No, I can respond to that pretty easily. It is, it's not a matter of not wanting to build more buildings. It is a really convoluted space utilization calculation that the state chancellor's office requires us to submit based on the square footage of classroom space, lab space, office space, meeting space and general student space. And so when we put in those calculations, the Los Banos campus, the needs of the Los Banos campus, we'll start getting more points once we start building more buildings and filling them up. It's a matter of numbers. So proportionately, we serve about 1,100 full-time equivalent students here in Los Banos. For our entire district, it's about 10,000. So proportionally, right now, we have more facilities and we qualify for more square footage on the Merced campus, which is exactly what we should be doing. We're four years ahead on the Merced campus. On the Los Banos campus, once we start to build and fill seats and get more enrollments and expand, but it's a matter of enrollments because a lot of the students, our students in Los Banos, are commuting to Merced. So we have to identify the low-hanging fruit for the programs that they need over here, aligned with the industries, build those facilities, fill up those classrooms. Then we qualify for more points to build more facilities. Now, the square footage-wise and the number of buildings, it does pan out to be pretty proportional with the dollars that are being asked of the entire community, the service area. So as far as the Los Banos service area, 40,000 square foot, once you calculate the dollars that are escalated to build these facilities, are pretty darn close to the percentages that I just panned out for our service areas and the populations. But I don't discount what you're saying, I get it. I'm the president of Merced College, I believe in all of these communities, I want to grow. Los Banos, it's my job to make sure that we serve our entire service area and that we maximize growth opportunities. I would love to build 10 buildings over here because I know they'll fill. I know that we have a community that is hungry for higher education. It's the most affordable education you can get. When I go to communities and ask them to raise their hand, if they went to Merced College or they have someone in their household, 90% of the people raise their hands. And when I ask them where they went after that and then I say, "Where was the best education you got?", they'll say, "Merced College, the best teachers they got." So once we build it, we know the seats are going to be filled. But we've got to maximize on this convoluted point system that's a part of our state chancellor's space utilization and that's just the reality we live in. But we'll get there. And once we build these, we're going to get more points and we'll expand and build more out with time. To your point about the dollars, though, the dollars are pretty proportional to the overall populations and the numbers. But we'll get there and we will build more. I've said it multiple times, this is where our growth is and we recognize that.
So basically, what you're going to be doing on the Merced campus is infill infrastructure. You're not expanding out.
There is some expansion, but we qualify for more points because we're bursting out the seams with the Merced programs. But that makes sense, right? We've had 50-plus years to build those programs. People are coming, so we've got to build the same thing here. And to do that, I know it's the chicken and the egg, but it's just the calculations and the way that they do it in Sacramento. I'm not defending it, but we have to build programs. We have to show enrollment growth. Once we show enrollment growth, then we qualify to build additional buildings within our system.
And that includes students that are leaving Los Banos to attend the Merced campus?
That includes all of our service area. They don't separate us out. As far as the chancellor's office views Merced College, we are the Merced Community College District. That includes the Merced campus and the Los Banos campus. Now, they recognize it as a center, a comprehensive center, but as far as enrollment numbers go and space utilization, we are a district. But once we're able to build and grow enrollments out here, we'll continually maximize the space utilization points. It's a Fusion software system and we'll be able to demonstrate why we need to grow more. But that's a part of how this process goes. And the Merced campus does have more points as far as growth goes because they've had robust programs over there for a long time. So as those grow, we'll be able, but we're also tearing down some old buildings as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Great questions.
Mr. Freya?
Thanks. I can attest to the breaking down the doors. I teach a number of classes over there and they're always full.
Yeah.
Multiple, we have multiple sections of the same class and they're always full.
They are.
And the question I had is, you had mentioned, I think, the total enrollment at Merced main campus, the Merced College. And then do we know how many of the students that are enrolled there are from Los Banos or, I guess, from the West Side?
Yeah, we do. I don't have that data with me tonight. That's something I can easily pull and send to you all. Well, I mean, we do know that we have a large portion of students that because we don't have some of the programs that they want to be in that live here in Los Banos or Dos Palos or even, you know, even north of our district, they are commuting to the Merced campus. We're not looking to build and expand in other areas beyond our two campuses. So naturally, we look at that type of data as a part of our educational planning process to see where our students live, zip code data, what they're interested in, where the emerging industries are. And so I don't have it off the top of my head. But yeah, we do. We literally have hundreds and hundreds of students that are commuting to the main campus because we don't have the program they need or want here in Los Banos. That's part of why we're going after a bond, so we can fix that and address those needs.
You said 10,000, that's the total, about 10,000, total enrollment of the entire system?
This past year, in 1819, we had a little over 10,000 full-time equivalent students. That's about, it's roughly 1,100 full-time equivalent students. Am I getting that right? Roughly 1,100 full-time equivalent students here in Los Banos.
Right.
And the other 9,000 in Merced.
Right.
Roughly, I mean, they're-
And of course, as we mentioned, the numbers, there's a good percentage of that 9,000 that's from the West Side, though.
I wouldn't say a good percentage, but yes, there are many students and I'll pull that data and send it to you. But there are many students that live here and take one or two classes here and then two or three classes in Merced. Some that just are fully engaged in a career technical education program in Merced that we just don't have here yet.
Yes.
But we would love to have. But again, that's part of why we invest in a bond measure so we can get the facilities we need to grow.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming.
Hey, thanks for having me. And thank you, in all sincerity, thank you for the continued support of Merced College. You all, all of you at this DAS have demonstrated that support, whether it be showing up at events or helping us get the message out or advocating. Over the last three years, we've expanded our high school dual enrollment. Because of the help of some of you, we've advocated for better transportation, including that alternate path that we continue to talk about. So we really do appreciate the support of Los Banos and we're proud to be a part of this community. So thanks for having me.
Thank you.
High school kids are here. We are launching a soccer program and that will launch next fall, a men's and women's soccer team. We haven't had one in many years. And because it might be in the back of your minds, when are we going to get sports teams here? Once we expand and get closer to being an actual college over here, that's when we can invest in sports teams. That's what our association requires of us. So, yeah, thanks for mentioning that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Where should I leave brochures, Mayor?
Would you give them to the city clerk, please?
You got it.
Okay, let's go on to item eight, public hearing. If you challenge the proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 8A, public hearing. To receive public comment and consideration of approving and adopting the updated AB 1600 developmental impact fee jurisdiction justification study prepared by the City of Los Banos by DTA David Tousag?
Tossig.
Tossig, okay. And associates, adjusting the city's development impact fees for all development within the City of Los Banos and a proposed amendment to Title IX, Chapter II, Article VI of the Los Banos Municipal Code establishing a general government facilities development impact fee. And we are going to go to Mr. Fajian?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mayor and city council members, tonight, we're going to have a slightly different recommendation that's on the agenda. We recommend that the city council receive this staff's recommendation, open the public hearing, receive public input, close the public hearing, and continue this item to a date certain of January 15th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. We still are working on one item on one of the fees and we're trying to work through a small part of that. So we'd like to bring you the full study, complete with all the fees. So that's why we're asking for a continuation. And I do believe you were given two, one was an email, one was a letter from BIA. There are two of our stakeholders that also see the continuance as a thing that would be a positive thing to get this study completed.
Okay. Any comment from staff at this point? Not hearing any. Okay, I would like to open the public hearing on, let's see here. Let's go on to City Council Resolution Number 6163, adopting developmental impact fee justification study for the City of Los Banos and revising development impact fees for all development within the City of Los Banos. And Ordinance Number 1178, amending Title IX, Chapter II, Article VI of the Los Banos- of the Los Banos Municipal Code establishing the general government facilities development impact fee. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on either the resolution or the ordinance at this time? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I am going to continue the public hearing. So students, if you come back, you can listen to this interesting discussion next time. So I'm going to continue the public hearing to January fifteenth and also the resolution six one six three and Ordinance Number one one seven eight. So we need to vote to do that? Yeah, yeah. So do I have a motion in a second? Mrs. Lewis?
Before we move forward.
Yes.
I have a question of our city council. Do we have an opportunity tonight to ask what that one objection was on this project? Okay, because I would like to know. So, Mr. Fajian, could you tell me what the, you said there was one objection?
There's one, a section of one. There's the, the fee that's in question is the police development fee. And it pertains to the animal shelter part of it, which is a very small part of it. We're trying, what we're trying to justify and to get, so it's correct, and we, we think it's correct, but we're going to look at it, is the amount of that fee versus the police needs study. The amount of that facility and, and the split that it should go to current residents and future residents. That's the fee, that's the part that we're working on.
Well, I, I have a comment I'd like to share, and I hope I'm appropriate in doing that.
Well, the mic's on, so go ahead.
I'm looking at our council to make sure that it's okay.
Well, he'll tell you afterwards.
I think it would be more appropriate to listen to the public hearing testimony at the next public hearing before you make any comments.
Well.
You certainly can ask questions at this point. It is the recommendation of staff that we continue the public hearing in order to give staff to work through this issue to make sure that the justification study is what it should be and legally defensible.
Okay, so then, if, if, with this one caveat that's sitting here about the animal shelter, what you're saying right now that council shouldn't have any concerns, one way or another, about whether this should go forward or giving an opinion for staff to take back for the negotiations?
There, there is no negotiation, first of all. It's a justification study where the data is compiled and there could be differences of opinion on how the study allocates the cost of these facilities from current development to new development. So a question has arisen about how the justification study deals with that and we need more time to, to work through that with our consultant so that when we do come back to you, you have a recommendation from, from the staff that we feel very comfortable with. Right now, there's been some questions about the study and we just want to make sure we're good with it before we go forward and present it and have you consider it.
Okay. All right, then I'll hold my comment.
Thank you.
All right. Okay.
Because all this is up for consideration by the council when you bring back the information that after you've, you've vetted everything, correct?
Certainly.
Yes.
There'll be an explanation of each one of the fees, there'll be an explanation of each, how it's justified in terms of how it's allocated between current development and new development. And we'll spend probably quite a bit of time discussing this issue particularly.
Mrs. Lewis, you okay? Okay, thank you. All right. So can I have a motion, please, by someone to continue this to January fifteenth? Both the items. Yes. Public hearing, the resolution and the ordinance. Okay? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion for Resolution Number six one six three.
Yes.
To be continued to January thirteenth, two thousand twenty meeting.
January fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay, January fifteen.
Okay, so let's, can we do all three at once? All right. Should I give me a motion with that? To, for the public hearing?
There's two, two items.
So let's do, you want to continue Resolution six one six three?
So let's back up. There's one public hearing with two recommendations coming to you at the next meeting out of that public hearing. So all we're asking you to do tonight is to continue the item A, one and two, and continue the public hearing to a date certain, which is January fifteenth at this council chambers.
And I can do it all in one fell swoop?
Correct.
Okay. So with that, I would like to make a motion to continue Resolution Number one six, six one six three and Ordinance Number one one seven eight to a date certain of January fifteenth.
And the public hearing?
And the public hearing.
Yes. Okay. So we have a motion by Mrs. Lewis to continue the public hearing to January fifteenth and Items One and Two, which are City Council Resolution Number six one six three and Ordinance one one seven eight to January fifteenth. Do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been motioned by Lewis, seconded by Jones, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried, thank you. Let's go on to Item B. Public hearing, to receive comment and consideration regarding the proposal of the City of Los Banos as the City of Los Banos Groundwater Sustainability Agency, GSA, approve the Delta Mandota Sub Basin five dash zero two two dot point zero seven, San Joaquin River Exchange Contractors GSP Group Groundwater Sustainability Plan, GSP, as it relates to the City of Los Banos. And Item B one, City Council Resolution Number six one six four, acting as the City of Los Banos Groundwater Sustainability Agency, GSA, approving the groundwater sustainability plan, GSP, for the San Joaquin River Exchange Contractors GSP Group in the Delta Mandota Sub Basin, five dash zero two two point zero seven, dated December nineteenth, as it pertains to the City of Los Banos, GSA. And are we going to Director Fajian?
Thank you, sorry, that's, that is a mouthful.
No, it's okay.
And I'll, I'll do, to help you out, I'll do the recommendation at the end because it'd just be repeating what you just heard. But we've been working on this for a while, as you know. CCID came and gave a demonstration of a presentation, a PowerPoint on this. So I'll, what we are looking for as a recommendation is that you do, and you are acting as the Los Banos Groundwater Sustainability Agency, the GSA, which you established as yourself a while back, and I'll let you know when that was. I want you to receive the staff report, open the public hearing, receive public comments, close the public hearing and adopt Resolution Number six one six four. Now, what's important about this, what, a lot, a lot of things are important about this. The actual, the actual GSP, and there's a hard copy in the back, I have to say that as a public record because we have to show that we had a hard copy in the, in the room, is about a twelve hundred page document, two volumes. There is, there was a link and there still is a link on the website to go to it. What I provided in the staff report is the sections that pertain to the Los Banos GSA, which is all you're approving, you can't approve the City and Newman one, you can't approve the other ones because as a GSA, you can only approve what's in your area. But if we, if you go back, this all started back in two thousand fourteen when the state through three, through one senate bill and two senate bills and one assembly bill passed the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, it's called SIGMA. And that basically said that it supports the local groundwater management in California. And the goal is to achieve groundwater balance in each basin or sub basin by twenty forty, which means everything you take out of the groundwater below the surface, you have to replace. It's a balance act. So that's in order, in order just to make the basins healthy per the state's definition of that. And in that same year, in two thousand fourteen, the groundwater basins and sub basins of the state were prioritized by the Department of Water Resources. And it was based on four basic items. Reliance on groundwater, how much that basin relied on the groundwater. How much was irrigated acreage, because that uses a lot of groundwater. How much of the groundwater basin was overdraft? And what that would mean is how much, when you were taking more out of the ground, then you were putting back in, then you were overdrafting your basin. And number D was subsidence, and that's how much your ground settles. So those four items are taken into account on how they scored your basin. We're in the Delta Mandota Sub Basin and it was a high priority and we were placed in Department of Water Resources critically overdrafted basin list, which is, which is in basin terms about the worst place you could be. So by doing this, this basin immediately, by the law, it made us form GSA, Groundwater Sustainability Agencies by June of thirtieth of two thousand seventeen. And the powers of those are listed here and they're basically to regulate any water rights and enforcement actions for any, anything that has to do with the groundwater and quality and quantity. On January eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, we brought before you Resolution Number fifty eight thirty one, which established the Los Banos Groundwater Sustainability Agency, which, which we had to do by law. Sorry, this history, I know you've heard this a lot, but in this Delta Mandota Sub Basin, there's actually twenty-three GSAs. And of the, and each GSA must develop a GSP, so there's twenty-three of us in, in this critically overcharged basin. And we're one of them, and there's others in, in, in a lot of cities, a lot of the irrigation districts, they have their own. Each one has to have their own. And the other law says that by January thirty first of two thousand twenty that you had to adopt and develop a groundwater sustainability plan, which is what this meeting is about now. So, and the main thing about the ground, the main purpose of it is to provide sustainable groundwater management without causing undesirable results. And what is defined as undesirable results is groundwater levels that are lowering, that's the first criteria. Number two is a reduction of groundwater storage when we're, we're taking too much out and not putting it back. Number three is seawater intrusion, not applicable in this basin at all. Number four would be degraded water quality, we do have those issues both in our agency and throughout the valley. And number, I guess it'd be five, significant and unreasonable land subsidence. In this particular basin, we don't have it, but neighboring basins do have a, a problem with this issue. And that's mainly from overdrafting of very deep aquifers that you can't recharge. That's the main reason why we have subsidence. And one interesting thing is of all our wells, we only have one well that goes below that layer and we do not pump out of that, that, out of that layer, we have blocked that layer off. So we, we are not, we do not have any deep wells. And the last one is depletions of interconnected surface water. This doesn't affect our basin and it doesn't affect our GSA. Basically, that is, if you put a well right next to the San Joaquin River and you're actually drafting out of the river, that's what they mean, how the groundwater would affect the surface water. We do not have that in our GSA and we do not have it in the, in this basin at the, at the moment. There, they have many laws on the, on the books in this area that don't allow you to do that, so. And the whole goal about, of this is to achieve a basin's sustainability goal within twenty years of the GSP implementation. Now, what, what they did, they made it a little easier. All the, all the groundwater sustainability plans have to work with their neighbors. They all have to coordinate. So eventually, the, the thought process is the whole state's got groundwater sustainability plans and they all coordinate because it goes one to the other. Of the twenty-three groundwater sustainability agencies that the sub basin has, our sub basin has, six GSPs were formed, six groundwater sustainability plans were formed. In other words, a lot of people teamed up with others. As, as you can see on the report, we actually belong to a GSP of, I think there's eleven. Yeah, there's eleven GSAs that are in our GSP. So that's why the, the volume back there is fifteen hundred pages. That's eleven of us in one document, working together. And that's called the San Joaquin River Exchange Contractors. There's, there's six cities, there's three, three counties and several exchange contractors. One example of an independent one is Grasslands did their own groundwater sustainability plan, so. So of the twenty-three, it's all split up, some have their own and other ones have groups, and we're in a group, so. Let's see. The important thing about this is the entire GSP that you belong to and each individual, individual GSA, so there's six of, there's eleven of us in the GSP, ours. The entire GSP has to be balanced. And each individual one has to be balanced. And that's where it becomes tricky because our, our entire GSP of these eleven GSAs, our entire plan for these eleven agencies is balanced because the irrigation districts and all, there's a lot of recharge in them. The City of Los Banos is in the negative by, currently by about twenty-two hundred acre feet per year. So that's twenty-two hundred acres a foot deep per year. That's what we're at about. So we're starting in an out of balance situation that we have to get to a balanced situation by projects or by trading water, water quantities. And as you put in more wells for the city and all, you still have to make, get to that eventual twenty-year balance. You're not, you're not prevented from putting wells in, you're not prevented from doing your own planning, you're not prevented for any of your general plan documents or that. But you, but you do have to meet the balance, you have to do that. So if you can't meet the balance, you, you, you've got, you've got to show that your growth is balanced with that. So there would be costs involved with maybe new development to balance this out. So we have to do that individually, so currently we are at a negative, so. So one of the, the most important thing that comes out of this is the report, and this is pretty much, this report hasn't changed since last time this was presented to you by CCID, hasn't changed at all, it might have been a couple typos or the draft was taken off, but it's been the same report. The report recommends the following five project types. It's not really a project, it's a type of projects for our, for our GSP specifically. Stormwater capture, and that's using stormwater that we capture in our basins for other uses. That's one thing in the future that we need to look at. A demand reduction through reduced watering, it says reduced watering, it can also be higher fines that prevent the, as much waste as we have from irrigation. Maybe not reducing the days, but reducing the amount of waste down the, down the gutter. That's, would be way before we reduce the days. And that's, I'll, to tell you the truth, the only way that's done is to up the fines by a lot. People sometimes say, I'll pay that fine to, to get caught once every three months if I can keep it as green as I want. But it seems like it's a financial situation that, that has people respond in this situation. The other, the next one is surface water transfer. And that is to take our wells and transfer that water, trade that water to a CCID and take surface water from them. Now, we're looking down the line of having to do a surface water treatment plan. So that is a very good option to use. So that, we're looking into that and how that would work also. And this is a way to use, see, the water that goes in the irrigation districts that are part of our, that is why the whole area is balanced, is because they are very overbalanced. So they are very healthy in this groundwater sustainability and the cities aren't. Especially ours because we have the biggest city in this area that's in this plan. So we have to work with them because currently we're using their water to balance. So we need to work with them on this. Purchasing groundwater credits, that's the same thing, we're purchasing credits from someone that's healthy, you can do that. And then the participation in the recharge projects. And if you remember, one of the recharge projects that came by was recharging through the Los Banos Creek. We didn't actually become, we didn't actually become a partner on that project, we do benefit from that project. In the future, we have to, it was an insurance problem last time, if I remember rightly. It was an insurance problem and why we couldn't bring this forward to you. We have to find a way to get out, over that hurdle because we have to show not only that we're getting the benefit, but we're actually part of the organization that is doing it and, and sharing in the cost. That's a requirement of this act, too. Right now, we're getting that benefit and we're not participating as a participant. And it would be nice to be on, to be sitting on that board and talk about it as we're getting the benefit, but. So that's one thing we need to work on, and that was mostly at that time, I remember, only an insurance issue. So, like I said, the entire document is online and it is in the back. The notice of public hearing was published in the local paper on November twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. And at this point, the recommendation is that you go forward and approve this resolution that approves the groundwater sustainability plan that I have presented to you tonight as it pertains to the City of Los Banos Groundwater Sustainability Agency. So I'll be happy to take any questions.
Director Fajian, how has drip irrigation, has that helped or, or hurt? Because there's no percolation, there's no recharge with drip irrigation. What has that done for subsidence or anything, or does it, is there any effect?
I, I, subsidence isn't caused by that, so that.
No, it's not caused by that, but I'm just asking about.
I, I don't think that would have any, any bearing on subsidence unless the well, the water that you're getting is from some deep aquifers. But like I said, the people, the absolute, the actual subsidence areas are outside of our area. But like I said, the people, the absolute, the actual subsidence areas are outside of our area, which they're trying to work for. I, it definitely, it definitely, though, has conserved water. There's no question about it. But it hasn't been in the quantities you think, because you don't have the water going down into the soil and recharging.
Yeah.
So it's not as big a, a savings as they thought, but it is a savings.
And you said that you can purchase units from another healthy?
They haven't set that up, but you can work on purchasing units from that, yes.
So if someone's an abuser, they can purchase units from somebody else?
It's not as easy as that. You have, you, you have to show a good intent, too. You just can't say, I'm gonna use all I want and I'm a rich community, so I'm gonna buy, buy off that credit.
So everyone with green lawns and, and abusing the water can't go to another district and say, we want to keep our lawns green, so we're gonna buy all these units?
No, you can't do that. The Groundwater Sustainability Act lets you do that, but it's, it's very, it's within reason. There, there's strict guidelines to do that, which I can't dictate right now, but I've talked to the CCID about. There's strict guidelines to do that, where you just can't say, I'm using every, everything I want, but I can pay two hundred and fifty a month for water. There, there's very strict guidelines for that, especially in overdrafted basins, which we are.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to hear that.
I see, I see the biggest thing would be recharge, recharge and, uh, transfer of water between surface and ground. Eventually, in the forty years here, we will have a service water plant. There's no question about it. Our wells can't keep up with, with our production. We will have a service water plant for two reasons. We need the quantity, and it's, it's the best way to get the quality up, is service water.
Maybe this isn't a fair question, but is, do we know the percentage of, of the water in our area that's going out of district, that's being pumped out and being sold?
I do not know that.
Okay. Cause I've heard that, you know, people are, they have wells and they're pumping the water and either to the Delta Mendota, and they're selling their water to, to other areas.
Most of the water that I know that's getting pu- I don't know about that particular one. Most I know, the water that's being pumped is actually being pumped in the CCID canals
Uh-huh.
to assist other areas within the basin. They, they do a lot of that, a lot of that, and they do transfer a lot of water there. Um...
But are they selling the water, though? I mean, some people have contracts that they can sell it?
They call it water wheeling, and it basically is sa- selling it for something. It's, they just deal with water that way, and it wa- it water wheels, it's complicated. But yes, there's a credit you get, and you get it towards, you could, you can, if you have a ranch on the other side of the valley, you can get credit for water over there for what you do here.
Okay.
But the, see, that's, that's why the state said each individual GSA had to be balanced, because they didn't want someone just, uh, just way up there and making everyone else balance and having that particular area not responsible for themselves.
Good. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, um, I, I had a question on that transfer of credits, too. And it's, it's just the credit transfer you pay. You don't actually get the water. Is that correct?
The, the service water transfer, or the, the service water transfer? No, that, that's actually, that's actually us taking our wells or, or, or wells that we have and doing the same thing the farmers do, pumping it back into, let's say, a CCID canal. And for the water that we put in there, we get a credit on a surface water that goes to a plant, and we process it there. Because service water is very expensive. And let's say our wells, chromium is very expensive to treat. We can't find a reasonable way to treat it. And we're five years down the road, and we're not making as much progress as we want. It probably would be cheaper at that point to sell our water into CCID, because the, the crops and all, the chromium doesn't affect what they're using it for. They're more worried about selenium. But chromium doesn't affect that, and we get the credit back to go to a service water treatment plant.
Okay, so we would be able to get water from somewhere else?
W- w- the, the purveyor of water that we would probably go to would be CCID. They have the control of the water in this area, yes. And, and we were already talking about long-range, long-range to do that. We were gonna do, even before the Sigma was in place, it was in our water master plans that we would have to put in a, a ten million gallon a day service water treatment plant, even with our wells.
All right. And then, um, it looks like, basically, from what I can understand, on, I think it's page two of the report, there's some bullets there, you know, conducting investigations, wire registration, all that. It seems like this is a self-policing within the city, that we do our own policing?
Yeah, it, it is a self-policing unless you don't do it, and then it becomes a state policing. It's, yes, it is a self-policing, r- r- right. It, it's sort of like any, anything that could be in the groundwater restrictions and, and well rights and things like that, become, become the GSA's responsibility, not the city's, but the GSA is an organization of the city. So it's the same body, but it's just, it's just a terminology difference. But you're right. It is, it is really a policing, uh, because the only way to reach this balance is you have to really police the water use. You don't have to necessarily restrict it, you know, but you have to police the waste. You really...
So is, is this just districts in the valley, or is this also on the coastal area?
This is statewide.
Statewide, so they, you know...
Yeah. But the ones that aren't critically drafted have different timelines. I mean, our timeline to get all this done was quicker than, let's say, someone that was very healthy in the district and wasn't considering, considered a critical basin. We had a quicker timeline, because, uh, our groundwater basin was in worse shape. There is groundwater basins. They'll do all this study, and they'll be so positive, they won't need to do anything, because they're not even come, coming close to being a negative influence in the future. And there's some saltwater intrusion, Monterey-Casterville, they're gonna have large issues with that, large issues, which we won't have.
Yeah, I was thinking, and, and I realize that, uh, Monterey, um, in that area, they have the salt intrusion. But I was thinking more of like San Francisco, San Jose, down in Los Angeles, whether or not they're required to do the same thing as well.
Yeah. They're, they're all, everyone's required to do it, but a, at what point, I can't tell you, because I don't have the map in front of me. It says if it was a critically one or not a critical one. I think most of all the critical ones were up and down the valley, the whole valley.
Yeah, cause most, most of those areas, uh, bring their water in from other sources.
Yes.
So I would assume they don't have a healthy groundwater, which, you know, I, I don't know how, whether they're gonna be exempt from doing these kinds of things or not.
No, what happens then, if they bring it in on a surface water and they don't have a groundwater source like Fort, and they don't have a lot of farming, they don't even have a groundwater issue at all, because they're not pumping out of the groundwater. So, so their surface, they have other issues with surface water. Surface water is hard to come by and very expensive. But, but, uh, a lot of the cities in the Bay Area, the ou- the outer ones like Morgan Hill, Go Away, they definitely pump a lot of groundwater. But when you go into the San Jose's and the Santa Claras of the world, no, that's surface water. And their issue is totally surface water, how they can get it, how they can treat it, uh, the cost of it. And their groundwater sustainability plan will be, uh, same-o, same-o. They won't have to do anything in their particular area.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Freya?
Uh, yeah, I think San Francisco dammed up Hetch Hetchy, what, a hundred and something years ago? And, uh, Oakland East Bay Municipal District is, uh, uh, party on the McCollum. And, uh, so tho- and those water, those lakes were dammed up ages ago. So they have some really great, great water over there. You said twenty-two hundred acre feet were, were upside down? That's per year?
Per year.
How big a percentage of our total water, uh, uh, usage is that?
Uh, it's very small.
It is?
It is very small.
Okay, so...
I mean, it's, it's a, it's a obstacle we have to overcome, but it's not a, it's not a major obstacle. The obstacle will be as we, as we pump more water out for, like, we need a new well. We need well sixteen, and we're looking at that now. We're allowed to do well sixteen. We're allowed to do it for this. We're also allowed to do it for chromium.
Right.
It just becomes a well you have to treat.
Right.
Uh, and we just have to, obviously, people are using the water, so we will go a little bit more negative, because we don't have all the going back in the water. So we'll have to find some way to balance that out. And there will be a, there has to be a balance between, if we can find a way to do it, it will, it will have very little effect on growth. If we can't find a way to balance it, it may have an effect on growth, and the groundwater sustainability plan will have to be part of the general plan that reflects that.
Okay, and that, it does have to be part of the general plan?
Yes, it does, definitely.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
How far do we have to go down to find good water now?
Uh, two fifty, three fifty. Anything beyond three fifty, we can't go. You start breaking through the clay.
Corcoran Clay?
Yes. It goes anywhere from two fifty on the foothills to three fifty over by the sewer plant.
And, and we could find pretty much contamination-free water at three, to two fifty, three hundred?
Except for chromium, Mucan, yes.
Okay.
Now, we're, now, our, our water does currently passes all the tests, including chromium. As you know, we don't have a chromium test. Um, not to say it's not on the high end of a lot of them, but we do pass all of them.
Okay.
You know, as you know, it's, the water's a little bit hard, but it's
Yeah.
hard across the board. There is a couple, I don't know why, and there's a one or two irrigation wells in the area that are free of chromium. Uh, it's, it's an, an odd, an odd aquifer or something, an odd string of it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Uh, any other questions, or do I have a motion, please? Oh, I'm sorry, I have to open a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on City Council Resolution number six-one-six-four?
Chief has. And not to disrespect you all or anything, but I wanna put a couple of things in your ear on where we are in life, um, in relation to these young people here. I'm at the UC, um, started Tech Equation about three years ago, and I'm also the founding president of the Q Project. I'm in a graduate program, Management of Complex Systems. It's part of the...
May, may I ask, sir, are you addressing?
Yes, this GSP.
No, 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 no. Are you addressing City Council Resolution six-one-six-four?
The one he just talked about, the water.
You're addressing the water?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Okay.
And, yeah, that's why I said, I don't want to disrespect you anyway. It's, it's kind of a long story, but it's not, because, um, this plan is a lot of pages, and these young people is the future. How can we get them excited about those pages, about this sustainability? The pla- the, the group of men at UC Merced, my, one of my professors, Leroy Westerling, he has a grant where they're studying the watershed, and the watershed is from the mountains to the ocean, which is covering this GSP. And the reason why I'm putting this out is that there are a lot of people that are looking at this idea of sustainability. The management of complex systems is a part of the Gallo, um, management, um, um, school at UC Merced. The new program is called MIS, Management of Innovation, Sustainability and Technology. So that's more or less the idea of where Tech Equation stands at. And generally speaking, moving forward, the Smart Farm Nexus actually sets in that space. And what I mean, the idea is that growing food hydroponically addresses a lot of the needs when it comes to this next generation eating. And so if we're looking at eating and using ninety percent less water, if we understand how this works, there's a big push toward education that these kids are getting to understand why the GSP is important. So generally speaking, Julian is, uh, he's from Los Manos, graduated. Um, I'm gonna let him take it from here, but like I said, I'm not here to disrespect what you all are doing, but what I'm trying to do is give you a, put a bug in your ear to get you to look at things in a different way for this next hundred years, because this is something serious. The reason why Elon Musk is saying, let's go to Mars, because he's like, Earth is not gonna be here. Can't breathe. The climate change is changing how our water tables are. Our water tables are going away, because a lot of this water's come from the snowpack, right? Because of the global warming, the snowpack is receding further toward the poles. So in general, the amount of mon- water that we have left, this groundwater that we're calling, that we're asking for, that comes from the snowpack is going away. But in the meantime, we need to understand, how do we act going into the future? So the Smart Farm Nexus actually speaks to that in relation to, as we pull these young people into the idea of sustainability, let's grow food using ninety percent less water, let's understand why this GSP is something that's important. What, what is it that we do moving forward? And as we learn what's going on, and like I said again, you all are a little older than I am. I'm a lot older than Julian. He's twenty-three, twenty-four, and I'm almost fifty. And so generally speaking, a lot of the sustainability stuff is for these guys right here. And so that's, that's my take. Again, no offense, I'm not trying to offend you.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, just to, just to let you guys know a little bit how it implements with Tech Equation, um, and their Smart Farm Nexus. Um, again, our, our program, Mighty, Mighty Minds, or our Kids Day in Tech, would be just kind of things just like that. So what, after talking with Principal Sutton over at Patekko and over, and talking with Superintendent Marshall and things of that nature, I see that there is already some, some interest in a Smart Farm Nexus. And there, after speaking with, um, the Mesa President, Mr. Burns over at Patekko High School as well, he's also in, involved in trying to put something like this together. So when, when we do these things, we're, we're definitely gonna have a lot of data capture for the, for just that. After putting in one of these smart boxes, we'll be able to see how that water sustainability is, is held. And all we're asking is that we give you, we give you another opportunity to have extra data capture to make your system and your opportunities to figure out a solution a lot more robust. That was, that was a lot of what he was speaking of. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to, anyone else who would like to speak at the public hearing on I, on City Council Resolution with six-one-six-four? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level, and this is an action motion. Do I have a motion? Oh, you under the comment, Mark? Sorry, go ahead.
Would you mind if I addressed that?
Sure, go ahead.
You're absolutely, you're absolutely right. Smart farming is really important. And the other thing, I'm sorry about the twelve hundred volumes in order, in order to make these state work, these regulations work. Seven-eighths of that are numbers. Um, and the, the important part, if you go online, you'll see the, the staff report, and it has a section for the sub- summary and a section on Los Manos. The other thing that I, everyone, I, the council, and I know they know this, but what this does point to in the long run is you, is everyone's gonna have to take their wastewater flow and not put it in ponds like we do. They're gonna have to treat it to tertiary, and they're gonna have to use it again. We, we just have to be able to use our wastewater flow, and we, and we don't have that ability here. It's very costly to put those plants in. Very few cities have ponding anymore. And they're not being allowed to do any new ponding, because this all, all these regulations are stemming towards where you're using all the water, including your wastewater. So that's something in the future that we're gonna have to look at. It's, it's way down the line. We're gonna have to purple pipe the stuff, bring it down, water our parks where, where we can and that kind of stuff. But that is in the future. Now, Go Away Morgan Hill, that was in the future thirty years ago. So we, we have some leeway from what they had to do, but using all the water is very important, but I do appreciate your comments, so.
I saw a system the other day online that the toilet had a handwashing station on top of it. And as you wash your hands, the wastewater from washing your hands, which sometimes could be up to a half a gallon, would then flow into the, uh, the, the tank, and then that's what you would flush the toilet with. So instead of washing your hands separately and have that water going down the drain, the water would go into a tank, you'd use that, you'd flush that, and you'd flush the waste down.
Yeah, I saw a personal video on that. My son moved to Tokyo, and that's the way it works in his flat. He calls it a flat. But that's what it works in his little tiny apartment.
Okay. Uh, Mrs. Lewis, did you want to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, um, to approve City Council Resolution number six-one-six-four as read by title.
Do I have a second? Mr. Freya?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Freya, to approve City Council Resolution number six-one-six-four. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. And students, anytime you need any water education, Mr. Faichen will come to your class, and he will talk to you about water conservancy. And we'll give you a tour of the, you know, what, uh, how Los Manos water works.
Show them the solar bees.
Yeah. Okay, let's go on to item nine, cancellation of regular city council meetings scheduled for Wednesday, January first, two thousand and twenty, due to the New Year's Day holiday. Guys don't want to come here on New Year's Day, okay? All right. So do I, simple action motion. Do I have a motion? Mr. Freya?
Oh, so moved.
Okay, do I have a second? Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by Freya, second by Santos, to cancel the meeting of January first, two thousand and twenty. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Advisement of public notices, number ten, two reports. Director Elms?
Yes, the first item is a vesting tentative tract map, and this is for Mission Village South Phase Five. It consists of ten single-family residential lots, which are medium density. Uh, this was a previously approved vesting tentative map, and this is only a portion of that... This was a previously approved vesting tentative map, and this is only a portion of that previously approved but expired vesting tentative map that is going to be coming forward. This will be presented on Wednesday, December eleventh at seven PM. Then the next item is site plan review number two thousand and nineteen dash zero five and conditional use permit number two thousand and nineteen dash zero five for Crocker's Lockers. This is for the construction of eight storage buildings with a two-story manager building to be developed on five acres. And this is, would be located off of Ortigalita Road, south of Tractor Supply. This item will be also discussed on Wednesday, December eleventh at seven PM here in the council chambers. And that completes my report.
Is that the lot in back of Tractor Supply?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Okay. Any questions on public notices? Okay. Let's go on to item eleven, City Manager's Report. City Manager Tarazis?
Just thanks to the students for being here tonight. Good to see you. You can come to other meetings. You're, you're welcome at all our other meetings. So I don't know if you'll get credit for that, but you're certainly welcome. So hope to see you at another meeting sometime.
Okay. Item twelve, report, report update on Merced County Association of Governance, MCAG and Measure V Committee. Well, as you know, I, I took the wish of the council to the last MCAG meeting, and I was the only one who voted, who voted to oppose giving money to the Ant Water Merced Expressway. That should have been no surprise to any of us. And in return, they gave us a promise again that all the future money is going to go towards the, the, the project that we are proposing, whatever form it's going to be in for Pioneer Road. And so a similar promise was made ten years ago with the bypass, and then the money was again transferred to Ant Water Merced Expressway. So all I have to tell you is this job is bearable because of, of what you do and the support that, that, that you show and we act as a team. So council, I just want to thank you because it, it helps me to make decisions. Because when I make a decision, I make a decision for this council and it's not just the mayor making the decision. And that's what I most appreciate. So what did come out of that is Caltrans, City Manager Tarazis and I have talked to the Caltrans director and, and we're going to have a safety committee. We're inviting the school district, highway patrol, Caltrans, our city police and, and the city of Los Manos, and we're going to talk about one fifty-two. One fifty-two has gotten to be so overcrowded that nothing's been done about it, and so we're going to push the issue. We need to push the issue as a council to make that road safe. There've been a number of accidents in the last two weeks, three weeks, and this can't go on. Students cross that road every day and it's, 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 it's very, very crowded. We're over thirty-something thousand cars a day going through Los Manos. So something needs to be done, whatever that form is. This council will come back when the PSR, the project study report is completed. And the council at that time will make a decision as to how we're going to go forward with helping to make one fifty-two safe and, and what the alternatives are. So that's my report tonight. So let's go on to item thirteen, City Council Member Reports. And tonight, we'll start with Mrs. Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jones?
No report.
Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, I just wanted to remind everybody that we have our downtown Christmas parade this coming Friday. And I believe it starts at seven. So please remind your family and friends to show up for the Christmas parade. We also have breakfast with Santa this Saturday morning over at the community center. It starts at eight o'clock. And it's always a, a really nice event, especially for the little children. But I also see young people your age coming as well. So come out and enjoy that opportunity and have breakfast with Santa and breakfast with your family. One other thing that I would like to, to bring up tonight, and this, this will be a council request. We have, you know, we've had a lot of consultants come and speak to us about various things, about, you know, new design standards for Los Manos. We had one that came and spoke about downtown. But what I'm really concerned about is, I, I don't want to see the ideas as we move forward shelved and nothing's done. We have an opportunity to have some new zone changing and regulations to help upgrade our downtown. And I think it's time for us to move forward and take advantage of that. So I, I would like to request next month to make this presentation to council again so that we can get started and move forward on our downtown. That's my request.
Okay.
Okay. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Probably a good time to do it with the number of changes that are taking place that we heard tonight with the buildings that, that are changing hands. So I can't talk about that, but thank you. Okay. Anything else, Mrs. Lewis?
That's it.
Okay. Let's go on to Mr. Freya.
Thank you, Mayor. Lots going on. Friday night, Christmas parade. Parade, I think, starts at six. And yes, and my, my high school, Los Manos High School Choir, Creekside Junior High Choir, will be there to sing at the lighting of the tree at the end of the parade if it's not raining. We've managed to avoid the rain just about every year for a long, for over twenty years. So, and of course, all the bands, the schools, the school bands all play. Really, if you haven't been to the Christmas parade, it really is an exciting thing to do. It's one of the biggest events in town, one of my favorite things. Best part of being a council member is getting to ride the fire truck in that parade. But I assume we're, we're in there again, right? Right, Mason? No, Mason's not here. Anyway, that's, it's, it's always fun. And then I have a couple of concerts at my choir's. My, my high school choir will have their concert at Los Manos High School Tuesday night at Los Manos High School, seven thirty, five dollars admission. And then at the, on the eighteenth, which is the next council meeting, which I won't be here for because I have a concert with the Creekside Junior High Choir, and that'll be at the Creekside Building, at the Creekside multipurpose room. No charge for that. There's a lot going on in Los Manos. Downtown Association has all these different functions going on. Chamber of Commerce has functions, come downtown. We got breakfast with Santa, we got cookies and cocoa with Santa, also a couple of extra days this month. That's the, see, the seventh, that's the fifteenth, fourteenth and twenty-first at the community center. So we hope everybody can come out and have a good time. This will be the last time I'll see you for a while because I'll be going into surgery at the end of December. So have a wonderful holiday. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and all the holidays you celebrate. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Freya. Let us know what your progress is, too.
I shall, if I survive.
I'm not doing the surgery. You'll be fine.
Oh.
All right.
And here I thought you were. That's why I was worried.
That's the new city insurance. You know, I, I get to do it. Okay. So the Christmas dinner, the Kiwanis Christmas dinner. It's, and students, I, you know, I don't want to put you in any harm, so, so please, if you just want to get an address to the Kiwanis people, they will then find someone, like I drive dinners out to people. So I don't want you guys delivering the dinners because I don't want you going out alone. If your parents say it's okay and, and they want to drive you to take someone, that's fine. But I just want to be sure, Mr. Dela Cruz, please, you know, affirm this that I don't want anyone in harm's way or anything. And I don't want them delivering to people because that's, that's not what I'm asking. Uh, you know, it, they could volunteer to serve and they could check with Mr. Valentine. There are flyers out there and then he could kind of direct, if they, if they, they could come to the fire station and they could volunteer there. But as far as, as the students going out and actually delivering meals, I, I'd say no. But if they had their parents' permission to bring to a relative and then the parent went with them, that would be great because I don't want to put anyone in harm's way. So, so please, yeah, affirm that for me. So, and if you get us an address, then we can go take some meals to them at, at that time. And that's probably the safest thing because then we'll use our cars to do it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. See, that's the next, that's a retired educator talking. He's always worried about students. And, and I am so worried about in today's age because I want you guys to be safe and grow up and have a happy life. So it's, your teacher will tell you the same thing. So, so please listen to what he has to say. With that, everyone has talked about the Christmas parade. If you want to come down Friday, it's, 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 it's a huge parade. And people put a lot of work into it. Come down if, if you're able to, to do so. And then the breakfast with Santa is always a nice event. And if you have younger brothers or sisters and you and your parents would like to come down, it'd be nice. Okay. With that, are there any other comments from council? Okay. I'd like to adjourn this meeting at eight fifty.